So there at 5:15 yesterday, we got noticed from the ACCG that the state has chosen to participate in two additional settlements and they will open that to local governments to apply. And so that's really, you know, how that works out. It depends on how they applies and how they allot that money, but they're going to have an additional, let's see, 5 billion, 5.7 billion, 44.9 million, 27.4 million, and 28 million to distribute. So that's a good bit of, and so with y'all's approval, we will apply for those two settlements for some of those funds also, and I'm going to hand that check on over to Mr. Terrell tonight.
All right.
The only other thing I had tonight, you all had voted at the December 13 meeting to rescind the ordinance on the 15-day annexation notification. I drafted that final resolution on that for you guys to sign if Commissioner Sayer, if you can just execute that tonight, I have it with me.
Okay. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0-8.
All right. County Administrator's report, Financial Board.
We didn't, I wasn't at the meeting in December, so I added the November numbers into this too. If you'll notice under actual revenue, we started collecting property tax in December of 2.407.730. Property tax again started coming in in December at 3,928,192. Lost, was still holding fairly strong at 334,274. EMS fees were just slightly under the target of 95.8, 95.657. Vehicle tag fees came in at 117,259. And for the year, we were running about a 7% over on expenses and that's kind of normal rate. First start of a new fiscal year, you do a lot of buying.
And if there's no excuse for them not being able to have guards within three years. Other facilities have been able to get these details out and we need them. We utilize them to pick up trash on side of the roads and our road sides clearly show that nothing's been going on. So we need to get something in place and I'd be more than happy to go to Atlanta, whatever we need to do. But it's been long enough to be able to get guards. So I'd like for us to get that done. Tell if you could give us an update at the next meeting on when you can get that settled.
How you want to go up?
I'm sorry?
To the top.
However far we gotta go, because we're not getting it locally.
Yeah, I mean, you got a district level lot soon.
Go to state level. We got a new department corrections person, I understand, is that right? From what I hear?
Yes.
Bennett has brought up the Newburgh intersection. That was one that we reemphasized with them. The Eagle Grove School Road, Liberty Church Road, we talked about. We talked about the Clay Brown, Bio Church Road, where they put the four-way stop in, that they were going to put the roundabout and based off the information that we have, since that four-way stop has been in place, there has not even been an accident there and it was, seemed like every two weeks, there was a pretty serious accident there. So positive feedback for them to hear from us. We also talked about up on 51, extra Green Tree Meadows, the new Dollar General, that whole intersection there, as well as the passing lane going up the hill. We asked them to look at that whole.
Have a copy of everything we've seen.
And one other thing we did mention and we didn't get an answer is with this detour that's going to be for a good little period of time.
Heart Amendment, that's something we do each.
Every quarter.
Huh?
Every quarter.
Every quarter to stay in compliance with this agreement. So can I get a motion to authorize me to sign that?
Somebody.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0-8.
All right. County Administrator's report, Financial Board.
We didn't, I wasn't at the meeting in December, so I added the November numbers into this too. If you'll notice, under actual revenue, we started collecting sale, property tax in December, 2.407.730. Property tax again started coming in in December at 3,928,192. Lost, was still holding fairly strong at 334,274. EMS fees were just slightly under the target of 95.8, 95.657. Vehicle tag fees came in at 117,259. And for the year, we were running about a 7% over on expenses and that's kind of normal rate. First start of a new fiscal year, you do a lot of buying.
And if there's no excuse for them not being able to have guards within three years. Other facilities have been able to get these details out and we need them. We utilize them to pick up trash on side of the roads and our roadside's clearly show that nothing's been going on. So we need to get something in place and I'd be more than happy to go to Atlanta, whatever we need to do. But it's been long enough to be able to get guards. So I'd like for us to get that done. Tell if you could give us an update at the next meeting on when you can get that settled.
How you want to go up?
I'm sorry?
To the top.
However far we gotta go, because we're not getting it locally.
Yeah, I mean, you got a district level lot soon.
Go to state level. We got a new department corrections person, I understand, is that right? From what I hear?
Yes.
Bennett has brought up the Newburgh intersection. That was one that we reemphasized with them. The Eagle Grove School Road, Liberty Church Road, we talked about. We talked about the Clay Brown, Bio Church Road, where they put the four-way stop in, that they were going to put the roundabout and based off the information that we have, since that four-way stop has been in place, there has not even been an accident there and it was, seemed like every two weeks, there was a pretty serious accident there. So positive feedback for them to hear from us. We also talked about up on 51, extra Green Tree Meadows, the new Dollar General, that whole intersection there, as well as the passing lane going up the hill. We asked them to look at that whole.
Have a copy of everything we've seen.
And one other thing we did mention and we didn't get an answer is with this detour that's going to be for a good little period of time.
Heart Amendment, that's something we do each.
Every quarter.
Huh?
Every quarter.
Every quarter to stay in compliance with this agreement. So can I get a motion to authorize me to sign that?
Somebody.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0-8.
All right. County Administrator's report, Financial Board.
We didn't, I wasn't at the meeting in December, so I added the November numbers into this too. If you'll notice, under actual revenue, we started collecting sale, property tax in December, 2.407.730. Property tax again started coming in in December at 3,928,192. Lost, was still holding fairly strong at 334,274. EMS fees were just slightly under the target of 95.8, 95.657. Vehicle tag fees came in at 117,259. And for the year, we were running about a 7% over on expenses and that's kind of normal rate. First start of a new fiscal year, you do a lot of buying.
And if there's no excuse for them not being able to have guards within three years. Other facilities have been able to get these details out and we need them. We utilize them to pick up trash on side of the roads and our roadside's clearly show that nothing's been going on. So we need to get something in place and I'd be more than happy to go to Atlanta, whatever we need to do. But it's been long enough to be able to get guards. So I'd like for us to get that done. Tell if you could give us an update at the next meeting on when you can get that settled.
How you want to go up?
I'm sorry?
To the top.
However far we gotta go, because we're not getting it locally.
Yeah, I mean, you got a district level lot soon.
Go to state level. We got a new department corrections person, I understand, is that right? From what I hear?
Yes.
Bennett has brought up the Newburgh intersection. That was one that we reemphasized with them. The Eagle Grove School Road, Liberty Church Road, we talked about. We talked about the Clay Brown, Bio Church Road, where they put the four-way stop in, that they were going to put the roundabout and based off the information that we have, since that four-way stop has been in place, there has not even been an accident there and it was, seemed like every two weeks, there was a pretty serious accident there. So positive feedback for them to hear from us. We also talked about up on 51, extra Green Tree Meadows, the new Dollar General, that whole intersection there, as well as the passing lane going up the hill. We asked them to look at that whole.
Have a copy of everything we've seen.
And one other thing we did mention and we didn't get an answer is with this detour that's going to be for a good little period of time.
Heart Amendment, that's something we do each.
Every quarter.
Huh?
Every quarter.
Every quarter to stay in compliance with this agreement. So can I get a motion to authorize me to sign that?
Somebody.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0-8.
I like a motion to take a final reading, but it's still a spirit ordinance.
All right, then we'll move on to.
See, you gotta have a first reading.
No, I need to read this. If I need to read this.
It's the same thing, but it's been a record.
Okay.
Still leave the dates for you so that no one else.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda.
Do some patching on some of the major roads, like they're doing out here on Recre. Cut out the bad stuff, mill out the bad stuff, fix that base first and then come back a year or two later down the road and do the final paving on. Y'all tell me how you want myself and Shannon to come up with another.
Harlan Press Road, Terrell, I don't remember that name.
It may not. I got the name from somewhere and I wouldn't know where I'd got it from, I wrote it down that night. But yeah, I would be better off to do that versus resurfacing that whole road, but I want to make sure everybody is aware of the fact that with this detour, this road's going to get hammered.
So should we just get hammered then?
That's what I'm saying, patch it.
Get some money.
But it's going, it's not going to be cheap to patch it, because there's a lot of sections in this road that's coming apart.
I'm worried with the road.
You know, kind of the roundabout budget figure on there, somewhere around $100,000 a mile for patching.
Well, that's half of the surface, or less.
Yeah, the repaint.
That's the bad places in them.
Laurel Drive is probably one of the worst, that and Milford Road, probably the two worst on this list, yeah.
But to me, on Laurel Road out there, they still, you know, like Preina's still working out there and there's still a lot of, you know, I guess, traffic on that road, wouldn't there be?
They about built out out there.
They go back out the other way. Why wasn't Laurel just done when Memorial was done? Is that just, is that procedure? I'm questioning.
We probably had to cut some. You know, I wish we had the money to pave them all at one time, but.
I was wondering, because that's what, I knew Memorial got paved, so I was like, why didn't Laurel just get paved?
And actually, on the next El-Mig.
It's coming off pieces, Terrell.
I know it is. I mean, it was up to y'all, but if you widen that road, you're going to use all your money.
Well, I'm going to say this, if we're going to take some of these roads off, we got to strip this road, because we didn't strip it.
Right, we didn't strip it, we can strip it, we can go back and strip it, that's not that.
Is that a liberty account or a striping account?
No. Well, you can do it either way. We had striping money is why I used, we got a grant for striping a couple of years ago and I spent that money all on striping.
Now you got to pay for our splores.
Now we got to pay for our splore. Striping running, what was it, running eight, nine dollars a mile?
Eleven hundred dollars a mile, wasn't it?
Yeah, eleven hundred, eight dollars, nine dollars a foot for double lines.
I just didn't recall us doing any striping, because I had two, three roads on the list and they hadn't been striped.
We ran out of that money too. Striping, the parole's strapping one of them.
But the cities in the county that have to be in compliance too with this space, they're not showing as non-compliance, just Hart County.
Yeah, that's a, that's a mess up somewhere, because we all signed the same form we sent in.
I know, that's why I'm telling you.
Okay. So this has got to be done in, by February.
I'd say by the first meeting in February, we need to, y'all need to.
You need to take Saturday afternoon and go ride.
It needs to be on Saturday, because it gets so dark. I'm willing to go at 2 o'clock. Is that good with?
Can I ride with you in your Jeep?
Yeah.
We all ride in a van.
We're going to ride in a van.
We'll put you in a, we'll put you in an elite van.
Let's go at, let's go at 1:00 in case we get delayed.
Okay.
Because running all, I mean, this takes a while.
It does.
I was unavailable last.
Okay. Well, everybody check your calendars, we'll send an email out when everybody can go and we'll go from there.
Press is welcome to go with.
Josh, that's an open meeting to the press, you're welcome to go. Okay. All right. Did you have a comment?
My name is David Thompson and I live on Sardis Point Road in Harwood. And the reason I'm here tonight is I'd like for y'all to consider paving Sardis Point Road. It's, it was originally tar and gravel and I've got, I took pictures of all the ones that some of their El-Migs are there, so here they are, if anybody wants to look at them. And now this county, county shows 11 parcels. I'm on, the next statement I've got here doesn't, doesn't mean that we're asking for this because we pay a lot of taxes, it's strictly need, is the only reason I'm here. If any of these roads needed paving more than ours, then I would certainly say pave them first. But I think that this road is pretty sad. There's about $6 million worth of property value on Sardis Pad, Sardis Point Road and that generates about $46,000 a year in taxes for the county. We request that this road be considered to be added to the El-Mig list for.
When it rains, water just stands on it. It doesn't have the crown like it's supposed to have anymore. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is. We need more money. The problem that we're going to have is with the governor suspending the motor fuel tax for about six months this year. I think you're going to see a significant drop in El-Mig funding next year.
Well, you know, the reason I'm here is to hopefully get you guys to add it to the list and hopefully get you to consider it for paving. I mean, I'm not saying that, I will say it is one of the worst roads in the county.
I agree with you. But you know, and my rebuttal to that is, is on this list here, you've got a lot of roads that terminate into core property, you know, and you've got a lot of roads that terminate into Elbert County, you know, and I would agree with you 100% if, if you didn't have roads on this list that terminated into core property, and that's exactly what ours does. It's not any different.
Just because they terminated Elbert County, don't mean they stopped.
I understand.
I mean, that's a major thoroughfare, like Manor Road, for example. I mean, that didn't terminate at Elbert County, nor does Bio Church Road.
I'm just going by your list here that you've got. You've got several of them, but I see three right now at the top of the list that terminated core residential property, which is the same thing ours does. Same situation.
How did this big, because they need to fix it.
Yeah, it needs to be fixed, it's a mess right now. I think I got your others. Here's a picture of it right there, I think, I think a contractor actually did the digging. But anyway. Thank you for your time and I appreciate y'all's consideration.
Appreciate that.
May I have your, you have an answer?
All right, thank you, Dave. All right, so, Terrell, can you send out an email of getting people's dates of when they can ride these roads?
I mean, I'm not saying that, I will say it is one of the worst roads in the county.
Or one of the county, I believe.
I agree with you. But you know, and my rebuttal to that is, is on this list here, you've got a lot of roads that terminate into core property, you know, and you've got a lot of roads that terminated in Elbert County, you know, and I would agree with you 100% if, if you didn't have roads on this list that terminated into core property, and that's exactly what ours does. It's not any different.
Just because they terminated Elbert County don't mean they stopped.
I understand.
I mean, that's, that's a major thoroughfare, like Manor Road, for example. I mean, that didn't terminate at Elbert County, nor does Bio Church Road.
I'm just going by your list here that you've got. You've got several of them, but I see three right now at the top of the list that terminated core measure of property, which is the same thing ours does, same situation.
How did this big, because they need to fix it.
Yeah, it needs to be fixed, it's a mess right now. I think I got yours. There's a picture of it right there, I think, I think a contractor actually did the digging. But anyway, thank you for your time and I appreciate y'all's consideration.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, you go ahead and answer.
All right, thank you, Dave. All right, so, Terrell, can you just send out an email, getting people's dates of when they can ride these roads instead of meeting up toward the end of February 1st, or February, end of January 1st, February?
Okay.
All right. All right, next on the agenda is Old Business 12F, City of Harwood Annexes. Additionally, the city has agreed to no less than one and a half acre properties, which lowers the density. They agreed to additional buffers around botanical gardens and the church buffers to protect the integrity of Little Cedar Creek into the green space areas, all which lower the density and, and in the city has committed a limit of no more than 650 doors, which is almost one half of the original proposed 1,200 doors. So the laws of our state are not made for the counties to be able to completely stop an annexation in these developments. We have actively participated and aired our concerns and the city has repeatedly requested that we trust in the implementation of its Chapter 32 planning process. And short of litigation, which is expensive and questionable in outcome, we think we have done this development regional impact and they assured us that they would put those conditions to comply with the DRI review. On December 29th, 2022, the Board of Commissioners along with Terrell and Kim had, we called a, called meeting to allow Kim, Terrell, Commissioner Dorsey and I to arrange a meeting with the city representatives along with the developers and their attorneys. The motion included that if they could not meet, we would file an injunction against the city for the purpose of delaying the annexation until we had a chance to meet with them. Kim conveyed the law that 3636-119 does in fact state that the county, the city and the property owners shall negotiate in good faith throughout the annexation proceeding. This process had not been done at the time. So prior to January the 4th, 20, these conditions. Now, I want people to understand that, you know, the city held the keys to the door this whole process. They had control of what happened with that door, when it could be opened. They had the keys. The county could only participate in how wide that door could open. That was our function and, and that was our purpose and, and I, I want to tell each of the commissioners, I appreciate all their time they spend in it. I'll, I'll tell the city council, I appreciate all the time they have spent with us, meeting back and forth. But we will have a call meeting tomorrow at 4:30 to read the final document, make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and then we'll vote from there.
Much of our effort in the past couple of months has, has been on this and it's all about the people that elected us and, you know, we, we wholeheartedly worked as hard as we could and, and we will continue to do so. But I do appreciate the city leaders that kept that door open for us and that communication, just me personally, that means a lot. And I'm optimistic on, you know, as we have matters in the future, you know, being able to, you know, find common ground and, and work forward to make a better community as a whole.
All right. Mr. Dorsey?
Yeah, just a few things. You know, this, this whole process has been difficult, to say the least. Laws are enacted and put in place by our state legislatures. Unfortunately, as Chairman Sayer said, DCA could not fire in. The rules to the game are set in Atlanta. If you're not happy with them, you need to be pounding on Alan Powell's door and sending them letters and Lee Anderson, they're our state representative and state senator. We can only play the game with the rules that they enact. And it would be ludicrous for us to start going into a litigation battle with the city because the loser's going to be the taxpayers. The losers will be the taxpayers in the end. It's your tax money that we would be spending fighting a fight that we know we can't win. And to get the-
We have the best, and I'm just going to say that to the system, we have the best that you all did, all of you could, and look how it changed after the meeting. We all came together and, and that's what I appreciate. Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. Enforcement, so can we have a motion that we take this as a first reading?
I make a motion, take this as first reading for County Market Office, State Code Enforcement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, any discussion? Okay, we take it as a first reading, all right. Next is a Paines Creek Park Rules Update and this is Lisa Carlic and myself and a few of the camp hosts have gotten together and, and they were telling me some of their concerns. And you'll see highlighted in yellow is some of the rules changes. You know, we're going to allow people to book two years in advance instead of one year. Also, site 7, 8, 23, 24, 33, and 34 have a minimum stay of seven days. And one reason for that is because, you know, there's people- Okay, we'll move on to advertisements of county board positions and we just need to give authorization for-
Basically, we advertise them in January or February every year for all boards that have come due in this year.
Going to get a motion to allow-
So move.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's five of eight.
Just for the public, go to our website and look at the boards, they're on the left-hand side, you can click on the boards and authorities. Look at those things, see if there's anything anybody's interested in. It'll give you a, a kind of a information of what the board does, what the qualifications are or not. We always looking for people to serve on boards. David used to, he ran away with them. But, but we need the public to get involved in that way.
All right. Next on the gen-
Hey, I gave you a reprieve for a couple of months.
Yes.
I'm Nancy Evans and I'm here again about paving the roads in our neighborhood, since we're talking L-MIG tonight. Specifically, this is Ren Road, Heath Cove, and Heathwood Circle. It seems there's been a lot of misinformation spoken about this during previous meetings about gravel roads always being gravel roads and that roads with a 40-foot right-of-way cannot be paved. So I am here to clear up some of those. Commissioner Dorsey, I think you were voted into office in 2000, is that right?
I was.
Okay. I am looking at a Hart County ordinance adopted in 1993. It's Article 5, Road Adoption, Section 66-136 Procedures. It talks about-
That's been the majority of what we've done here the last, I don't know, that's what the ordinance says. Is the ordinance up to date? Probably not, because if it's referenced in a Public Works Director at the time, you know, we had a Public Works Director. We don't have a Public Works Director now.
I know that.
And there's things that need to be updated in these ordinances and we've been very transparent with you folks, especially, I mean, all the time. But this road we've talked about, I gave you an estimate at the last meeting you were here about what a contractor who does paving for a living told me it would cost to do those roads and to bring them up to DOT standards. And we used to do that before I came on the board. Every road that was paved had a 60-foot right-of-way, it was bid out, it was graded, and it was made a superhighway. Billy Etheridge was the contractor that did most of them. You can go back, Kings Bench Road, Ben Maxwell Road.
Request. The Public Works Director will submit this proposed list to the county administrator for review. The list in turn will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for review and approval. Upon approval, the Public Works Director will forward a copy of the request to the DOT. Then it goes on to say additionally, when local funds are available, a paving list may be prepared for roads with 40-foot rights-of-way. Therefore, it looks like 40-foot right-of-way roads can be paved. Okay, now, I'm still going to-
So let's go back, hold on.
Can I, can I read through this?
No, I'm going to correct some of these things, because you're making false statements. So there are roads that are out there that have 40-foot right-of-way that have been paved.
You're correct.
Nobody said that they weren't. Nobody said that they weren't.
Slopes, fills, and drainage necessary for the construction and maintenance of said road and for the same consideration, all also release Hart County and the Department of Transportation from any claim or damage arising in account of construction of said roads, fills, embankments, ditches, or culverts, or bridges on account of backwaters, changing the course of streams, or in any other manner. Granters hereby agree to remove or relocate items such as mailboxes and fences as requested by the county. That's it. I see no deed restriction saying it has to remain a gravel road. I see nothing in the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes when the county accepted it saying it must remain a gravel road and I don't understand the argument that once a gravel road, always a gravel road.
I think in the minutes that was taken in, it would be maintained as a gravel road. Does it not state that?
It does not say that.
What was the meeting, it's something there about a gravel road, what was the date?
It's the description.
No, but what's the minutes of the meeting when it was taken in to the county road system?
That granite can contain up to 45 to 50% silica. Silica is a carcinogen when inhaled, causing silicosis and lung cancer, among others. This form of dust is so small, it can stay in the air for up to 12 days. Wow, 12 days. Sometimes when we don't see this dust, there are still particles circulating about. Can you imagine when there are 25 cars minimum per day, how much dust that is? It never settles. The particle size of this particular type of dust makes it able to float around longer than other types, sometimes even weeks after being disturbed. So when we say the dust is killing us, it literally could be. And it seems the board has no desire to help us. All right, I'm going to jump back to the county ordinance, Section 66-166, subsection B. In determining priority for road, forced county cost per mile, we had a discussion, let's see, you can pave over what's existing. We've had a discussion with the DOT at Man at the State, I don't remember his name right now, but basically what he said was if the county has this road and the county wants to surface over it, you don't have to necessarily dig it out, start over. You can surface over what's existing. And then, anyway, the final thing is number 10, is the overall condition of the road, which I feel like it's extremely dangerous due to the dust. One other thing-
You mentioned 22 residents, 10 people living there. I did a little study, how many people are full-time residents?
That is the 10.
There's, so 10 of the 22 are full-time residents?
Or equivalent. Not, not all, yeah, wait.
Are they permanent residents? How many of these are permanent, have permanent residents?
Okay, I don't know if you're looking at homestead exemptions, because they probably don't all, but here's an example.
That's exactly what I'm looking at.
Yeah, but here's an example.
And I'm also looking at the tax, where the tax bill goes.
Will you let me finish?
Yeah.
So there is a house just down the street from me, it's a mother and a son. The mother lives in Atlanta, the son lives full-time in her house. Does she have a, a homestead exemption? I don't know if she does or not, but he is there full-time. So what I did is I counted the people that are living in the house full-time, whether there's a homestead exemption or not.
And just for the record, I texted the Transportation Director for the school system and I asked, I said, do y'all not run buses on county, on gravel roads? He says, sure we do, so.
And Mike, it's the bus that goes down late.
Okay, ma'am, if you want to speed-
Yeah.
I'm just telling you what he said.
You spoke to the bus driver or the, yeah, why don't you get up and-
I'm just, I mean, we're saying that they don't do it and, I mean, this whole thing, regardless, I don't know what, what school they're going to or what, but I mean, I don't, we, we've talked about this and talked about this and talked about this. We don't have the money, we've told you folks that, but it still keeps coming up. I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but I mean, there's nothing we can do.
You didn't say that to Mr. Sardis Point?
We didn't pave, commit paving this road, do we? If you want-
Stop out and she saw what's stopping, let kids out and not turn into the gravel road.
Bottom line, when you moved there and you bought your property, was the road paved or was it gravel?
It's been gravelled, however, when I talk-
How many people, there's a lot of people in this road, in this county that's lived on gravel roads all their lives.
That's not my point. My point is the growth is killing us, just like the growth is killing y'all. And we're asking for help.
And I think you've got your answer, I'm sorry, but we don't have the money.
Well, we won't be going away. Silica dust is very serious. I don't know if you've lived in silica dust, it's awful.
I've lived in this county all my life and thankful.
That what we're being-
Anybody on this board has told you anything, that's not true, ma'am, I dispute that. You've made statements up here that have not been quite correct.
Would you like me to bring videos from the minutes from the meeting?
We can watch them. It may be a misunderstanding, I don't know, but it's just like the gravel road, I just sit here and text it.
Anyway, okay, well, we're not getting anywhere, so.
I mean, if you want, if you want, if you want them abandoned, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Can abandon, we have style.
That's fine, that's fine, we can make a motion.
Let's, let's-
No need to argue, but we'll be, we'll be back.
Okay.
We'll be back. We're not going to, it's too, too expensive.
Right.
Thank y'all for your concern.
All right. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The cohabitants of this place, which I think is a slice of heaven for me, are able to agree to disagree in most of our forums. The concessions that have been made, I tend to agree, probably would not have been any better if we'd gone through arbitration. As a city resident to sit there and stomp my feet on the ground and beat my chest and blub, 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 blub about what I don't like, still don't like to pay for stuff we don't need to pay for. We'll take this back up with the city, I'm sure, and we'll debate about that as the zoning comes in thing. But I do want to let each and every person in this audience know that Henry Kiesler feels that each person in this council have done the best that they could, given the circumstances they're working in. And I, for one, would be remiss not to tell you, each and every one of you, thank you and I appreciate you very much. And again, I am-